We'd like to start our October 2020 meeting. The regular business, the regular business meeting of our October 2020. Meeting and we did have an executive session. Starting. At six thirty this evening where we discussed potential litigation and some personnel matters. And I want to start the meeting with our pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation.
Under God.
And invisible. Okay, and I also wanted to announce that we had an executive session. Before our workshop meeting where we also discussed potential litigation and personnel matters. So. Our regular business meeting, the overview of the virtual meeting protocols, EJ.
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. This meeting is a, it's a public meeting. It's been duly advertised. It's being recorded. For any members of the public who are attending, you should be able to see us and hear us. You are automatically muted upon entering the meeting, so we cannot see you or hear you. But you do still have the opportunity to submit comments or questions. We ask you that you use the question function on the GoToWebinar platform. To type in any questions or comments that you have. If you have questions or comments on a specific agenda item. You can submit them anytime. I would, would ask that you not necessarily wait until that agenda item. Feel free to submit it beforehand and we will read it at the appropriate time. If you have any general comments or questions not pertaining to any specific agenda items. Again, feel free to submit them at any time and we will read them into the record and address them. At the end of the agenda during the public comment section. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, EJ. Our consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, September 2nd, 2020 Business Meeting and the September 17th, 2020 Workshop. Acceptance of reports, all departmental committee, commission and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors. For the month of September 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor? Madeline, would you like me to do a roll call for the votes? I know we went through this before.
I think for the benefit of the people who are in, I didn't only by telephone, it might be beneficial.
Okay, all right. So let's do this again. I made the motion. Fred seconded it. There were no comments or questions. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fred, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. The Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the Period Ending September 30th, 2020. EJ.
Thank you. So two, two items on here. One is the board consideration of authorization for the MMO, our Minimum Municipal Obligation. The reason I, we added this as a separate agenda item. Normally, this MMO is just made with a check. Since we've switched and updated the accounts with BBNT, we do this by ACH now. So Madeline and I felt it was appropriate for the board to give a, a separate authorization. Since this is such a big contribution. The board had already approved the MMO amounts. Last year, we approved them one year in advance. So. Now that we have received the state aid of 142,000. And then. This is the authorization to make the deposits into the respective pension accounts for the non-uniform and the police pensions.
Okay, so the consideration of authorization for the deposit of Schuylkill Township's 2020 Pension Minimum Municipal Obligation. In the amount of 233,000. I'm sorry, 233,300 and.
Twenty-seven.
$327 to the Township's Police Pension Plan and $41,043 to the Non-Uniform Pension Plan. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I think we need to add on here. Do we also have the approval to pay all the bills?
These are separate. Second.
It's a separate, it's a separate motion, Fred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll second the current motion. Thank you.
Okay, are there any comments or questions? I actually have a comment or a question. EJ, I know that at one point. We were making payments, smaller payments into the pension plan. Have we stopped doing that and now we're going back to doing it once a year again?
No. So what we were doing before for the, previously the payroll deductions, all township employees contribute 5% of their salary towards their pension. Before those deductions were being made and would go into a local bank account and then periodically throughout the year, we would do a lump sum transfer into the pension. So those were the periodic transfers. But now since we set up the ACH, that money goes into the pension automatically every payroll. So it's actually going in.
Okay.
More frequently now.
Oh, that's great. That's good. That's good. That's good news. Okay. All right, does, does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote aye as well. So, okay. EJ, would you like to talk about the Treasurer's Report and the approval of the bills?
Yes, thank you. So this month's Treasurer's Report showed a general fund balance of $4,485,174. Which was another increase over last month of about 121,000 and similar to last month. We don't normally see increases in our general fund balance this time of year. This is normally the time of year where we start. Decreasing because we're spending more than we're taking in. So with this being a strange a year as it is and our spending being down. We actually grew the general fund even more. And the general fund now sits at about $975,000 more than it did at the end of September last year. So very significant. Increase. All the other accounts increased for the month of September except for the cap, the Capital Roads Reserve, which just saw a minor decrease of about $5,000. And one thing I will mention as an aside, I don't know if any of you saw in the news this week. Governor Wolf requested a federal declaration of emergency for the storm that hit in August, the Tropical Storm Isaiah, which hit August 4th. If that is approved, the cost that we incurred to repair and repay, rebuild Jug Hollow Road could potentially be eligible for reimbursement. And we did spend about $28,000 out of Cap Roads on that rebuild. So it's possible that we might be able to submit to get some of that money back. So moving, moving on on the Treasurer's Report. Through the end of September, the, our general fund revenues to date was about $5.1 million, which is about 69% of the budget. About 143,000 ahead of the same point last year. We've received about 98% of our real estate taxes for the year. Still have approximately $112,000 of uncollected taxes. That, you know, Aaron is working on and anything that remains uncollected at the end of the year will be turned over to the county. Our earned income tax is still slightly ahead of pace for both our budget and in comparison to last year. So, so our earned income tax is staying strong. Our real estate transfer tax is over budget already. So that's in great shape. Our expenditures for general fund about $3.6 million year to date. So that represents about 46% of the budget. And as of the end of September, we're running a surplus in the general fund of about just a little over one and a half million, which is about triple. Where we were at the same point last year. So all in all, the budget's in really good shape. Our spending's been way down this year because of COVID. And fortunately, we've been somewhat immune from some of the revenue shortfalls that other municipalities have felt. So. It's, I do anticipate that we will probably finish the year with a surplus. It's, you know, it's too early to say how much because I do anticipate that that amount will go down. But. But overall, I'm pleased with the shape of the Township's finances and our budget right now. And I've reviewed all the bills for the month and have signed all the checks. Everything's in good order. And I would just ask, I do need to board volunteers who might be available to sign checks tomorrow. And that's, that's the end of my spiel.
All right, the consideration of acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and the.
I would like to congratulate everybody that it works with EJ because I know EJ isn't the only one. I know he supervises it. We, we as the board certainly appreciate all you do, EJ, and all the different people that are giving substance to this thing. But I would like to second it.
Okay, well, I made the motion and Fred seconded it. Is there any comments or questions? Okay, Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fred, how do you vote?
Aye, yes.
And I vote aye as well. So, and EJ, I will be available tomorrow to sign the checks. Is someone else available?
I'm available if you need me.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, EJ, send me a text when you want me to pop by.
Okay, perfect. I'll be, I'll be in touch with both of you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Two-minute reports, Board Liaisons. Mark, do you have any two-minute reports?
Yeah, the Regional Planning Committee. Finished up going through the chapters for the comprehensive plan update to include West Pike Land. So we should be seeing. Public sessions coming up in the next couple of months where we'll invite the public in for discussion so that we can incorporate comment.
Okay, great. Susan, do you have anything?
I do not.
Bob, do you have anything?
No.
Fred, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, I just have one small thing that I wanted to let everyone be aware of. I did get the, the other signage, the content. For the other signs at Valley Park. I got those back from. Bob's volunteer that he found for us to put all that, the signs together. They look fabulous. They went to the, back to the sign committee. There are some very minor changes that they wanted to have made, mostly spelling errors on my part. And. Hopefully we will see those in the signs shortly. So. Bob, I please do tell Caitlin she did a fabulous job on them and everyone is just super, super pleased with how they came out.
Good deal.
Okay. Two-minute reports, Township Manager, EJ.
Thank you. Real quick, just a reminder to everybody that our first budget workshop is scheduled for next week, Thursday, October 15th, 6:30 PM. And there's a second budget workshop, if necessary, scheduled for Thursday, October 29th, also at 6:30 PM. Only two other things real quick, just a reminder to the, to the board. We, there are a couple of PSATs webinars coming up dealing with. Fire issues, EMS issues, police issues. And the Township's role. So if anyone's interested, please, you know, let us know and we can get you signed up for that. I think they're coming up on October 21st. And then lastly, just the Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committee held their first meeting. Last week, I guess, yeah, or no, maybe two weeks ago. I just got a, kind of like a meeting summary email with a bunch of handouts. So I'll be disseminating that to the board for your review. The next meeting has not been scheduled yet. We do have to. Find one new committee member, so I'm actively recruiting that. Fortunately. The one individual who had to step down was not one of the developer, realtor people. So. I'm hopeful that finding the replacement will be a little easier than our previous recruiting issues that we had. That's it for me.
Okay, so EJ, does it make sense for us to actually make an announcement at the moment that we are looking for someone? If anyone is interested in helping out with this?
Yes.
So could you talk a little bit about what this is and what we're looking for?
Certainly. Great, a great, great call. The Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committee. It serves as an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors and also to the Township's Traffic Consultant, which is McMahon Associates. We've just commenced the Act 209 process to put together a transportation impact fee study. Which will allow the Township to. Assess an impact fee on future development to help defray the costs of. Traffic issues that arise from, from increased development. That's the whole point of the process. So. The committee will be meeting approximately between maybe eight and 10 times over the course of the next year to a year and a half. So far, the meetings are virtual. Maybe at some point next year, they might go back to in person, but for now, the meetings are all held the same way. And basically. Be meeting with the, like I said, with the traffic consultant who will be doing a series of. Studies and analyses and advising them throughout the process and ultimately making recommendations to the board. The end product being an order, a traffic impact fee ordinance that the board will adopt. Russ, Paul, anything you, I know you guys aren't involved in that for us here, but anything. You know, to add on the process for, for anyone from the public who may not be familiar with it, any important things that I might have missed?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you gotta emphasize maybe, you know, you don't have to necessarily be like a traffic engineer to be able to apply for that. I think that would be good. You know, just an overall interest in, in traffic in the township is, is really kind of all you, you need for that. So some people aren't intimidated and say, well, what do I know about signals and D cell lanes and traffic impact fees and, you know. Peak hour counts. You don't need all that stuff. You just need to be interested in improving the traffic in the township.
Yeah, actually, I was just gonna say the same thing that, that Russ just said. Any person who would be interested in this, they don't have to know how to do a traffic study. McMahon is going to be doing the study. What a person as, as part of this committee, their role is to. Let McMahon know what we have in our township as far as traffic goes. People know. Our area, they, they know what, where's, where, where traffic is bad, where it's good, where it's, well, I don't know if traffic is ever good, but. They know, they're very, very familiar with our township and that's how they can help and advise McMahon. With coming up with a good study for us. So I think that that's. That's something that people should know. So, okay. Right. Anything else, EJ?
No.
Okay, board discussion items, old business update, the COVID-19 Township Operations Protocols. EJ?
Thank you. Just real quick, the Township building still remains close to the public, you know, residents, contractors, anyone, you know, who needs to do business with the Township. Is requested to call or email staff for all inquiries. Staff's still working full-time, but we're, we're working in kind of a hybrid model right now. With, like I said, the building being close to the public. In addition, all public meetings. Will be held virtually until further notice and all township events have been canceled. Information on how to access the meetings is published on the website and via the Township's email distribution list prior to each meeting. And then the last update, I'll give Martha requested that I just kind of give an update on what our COVID-related costs have been so far. As I've mentioned at previous meetings, we're tracking any expenses that we've incurred that are specific to addressing the COVID. Situation because we may, well, we will be able to submit for reimbursement for all of them and hopefully we'll receive some form of reimbursement. There's no guarantee that everything will be approved. But to, to date, just under $18,000 in COVID-related costs, which are basically, you know, if not for COVID, we would not have had these costs. A little over 11,000 of that is for the police department and the majority of that is made up with any. Scheduling changes that have needed to be made due to officers quarantining or, you know, having potential exposures. Anytime those shifts are filled. With either an overtime or a comp time or even a part timer, we can track those costs and submit them because those are additional costs to the regular patrol salary. Beyond that, all of our cleaning supplies, additional cleaning services. Some of the partitions that we bought to put up in the office and even some of the software. The GoToWebinar, we're, we're tracking our, our subscription to this to submit as well. So about $18,000 is what this has cost us so far.
Okay, thank you, EJ. Discussion, Valley Park next steps. EJ, again.
Oh, man. I need to structure these agendas better, so. So, so last month, the board approved a proposal from Germican Style to remove the giant dead oak tree in Valley Park right next to the Anderson Cemetery. It took them two days to remove it. They did a fantastic job. They had given us a ballpark price to address basically the entire park. And it was. Somewhere in the $25,000 range or so. What I asked them was to put together a, a more specific proposal that the board could potentially consider for this year. To address the worst trees in the park. And by worst, I mean either dead or. You know, dying and, and very close to the trail where they could pose a, a safety threat to the public who's visiting the park and. And therefore be a, you know, potential liability issue to the township. So. They put together a proposal for us to basically, the, it's a two-part proposal to do a. Basically a pruning and trimming on the trees that don't necessarily need to be taken down along the walking trail. And then they identified six trees. That they have red ribbed out there for removal. So the total cost of this is $13,300. If you would rather wait till next year, that's, that's perfectly fine. But I did wanna, you know, that they are able to get this work in this year if the board wants to. The, this would be eligible to be paid out of the open space fund since this is park maintenance. So, again, if you, if you don't wanna approve it tonight and wanna wait, we, and put it in the budget, that's perfectly fine. But I wanted to at least bring this to you as an option to consider for now. As you all know, we are seeing quite a bit of foot traffic out of the park, which is great. And there are some. Some trees that, that are a little dicey out there that another windstorm comes through, you know. We could have some more down trees and potential damage right along the new trail. So wanted to bring this up for your consideration.
Do we normally go out for a second bid on something like that, EJ?
We did get a second. There, we did reach, pardon me, we, we got two bids for the work at, up at Pickering Preserve. And we did reach out to the second company for this same. Work at Valley Park and didn't get, get a proposal from them yet. So this is the only, we would normally would, yes. But this is the only one we have for right now.
In that we, what EJ submitted under the monies for the Treasury Report and such like that, and things looked pretty good, I would. Recommend to the board that we accept the removal of the trees and what's been done and have it done now.
Okay, so, um. Let's do this formally. So the consideration of acceptance of Germican Style Incorporated proposal for the tree removal slash maintenance. In the amount of $13,300 to be paid from the Township Open Space Funds as allowed by Act 115 of 2013. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions? So EJ, have you spoken to our insurance company? If we remove these trees, our liability insurance company, if we remove these trees. Will we get a lower rate?
I, I doubt it because when our, our insurance didn't go up when the park officially opened to the public. So I don't, I don't think we would see a decrease. But obviously the, the potential for. You know, an incident occurring out there could result in a lawsuit against the township.
Yeah, I know. Susan and I had walked it, I guess, what was that, Susan, last week? And we noticed some ribbons around some of the trees and they were pretty close to, to the trail. So. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay, Mark, how do you vote?
I did get a comment from, a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay. This is from Anita Schmidt. She says constituent here, get a second bid and get the work done. No need to risk injury.
Okay. All right, Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fred, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have one other update on Valley Park. It's not, it wasn't listed as an agenda item because it's not an action item, but we did finally get. Approval from Chester County Conservation District on our corrective action plan.
Yay!
For the. For the, the infiltration berm that's not working out there. And we actually, Nick and I. All of the modifications that are, were, that were proposed as part of the corrective action plan that were approved by the county. Nick can do. So. Nick actually met out there today with Gilmore to go over exactly what needs to be done. Needs to make some modifications to the pipe in the berm. It's basically going to convert it from. The infiltration berm that it was originally designed as to a more traditional detention basin that's, I guess, is gonna slow drain into the wetlands. In addition, we're gonna be ordering a, a different seed mix, a wet seed mix to be planted in the bottom of the berm or basin. The one. Thing I will point out is we are, we've reached out to the company that has done some licensed spot spraying for FragMities in, in the, in Valley Park for us in the past. To ask them for a proposal because there are a lot of FragMities coming up out there, including in this location. We haven't gotten the proposal yet, but. In order to move forward with the corrective action plan to try to get the permit closed out as quickly as possible. We, we're probably gonna have to hold off on having the FragMities treated just in that specific basin this year. The alternative would be have the FragMities sprayed, but then we might, that could potentially push the work for the permit into next year, which. My impression has been that the board's priority is to try to get this permit closed out as quickly as possible.
Yes, yes, definitely.
For the Valley Forge Park, there has anything, or historical committee come up with anything else for pricing or design or such for signage? Or what's gonna happen to the internal requirements of the building? Except.
Bob, do you wanna comment on that? I know you've been talking to. Diane about that.
As far as the. Say that again, Fred.
We're worried about the signage, the designing, the pricing, the placement. The timeage for it. And then has anybody considered what we're gonna do for the internal aspects of the building itself and what it's gonna be used for?
Now, one of the things I was going to run by the board is that it's not in the budget for this year. To do a whole lot with the inside of the building. I know, I mean, I know we need air conditioning. Then we were gonna look at a designer coming in. So I have a. A designer that I found that we're going to bring in and talk with Diane about. What can be done in there. And I think from there, then we need to get an inventory of what's gonna go in there. Try to figure out what artifacts we have, what photographs or whatever is gonna go in there. So that's in the works. And I think that's the, the, the next thing we're really gonna take a look at. And if we have a surplus. We may come back to the board and ask if we can bump something up into this year. To try to make progress faster than waiting for the next couple of years at the rate we've been going. So. More to be revealed as we talk again.
Okay. And Fred, to answer the other half of your question regarding signage. The interpretive sign for the, the park itself, that, that's right next to the trolley station. The content for that is already inside the. Inside the sign as well as the trolley track exhibit. The trolley track exhibit is complete and the content for that. And the content for that sign is in there as well. We do have an entrance sign and, I already discussed the content for the other three signs as well. So I think that answers your question.
To chime in on that, Fred, that's, that may be updated periodically. We did come up with some new photography. And we have a resident that has some, evidently some old photos, but because of COVID, we haven't been able to get in and get those yet. But as new and better, you know, material comes along, we may update that. And the only thing I will point out that I was there today looking over the, the track exhibit and I talked to Jim about this. I only have one small concern with that and the, it looks beautiful. The stain came out nice. First thing I noticed when I got there is that kids being kids are walking around the framework of the trolley track exhibit. You can see the clear mud footprints as they, you know, do a balancing act around that. And on the corner of the rail, there's a coupling on one side of a rail and then a plain end on the other side. And the plain end on both sides, they're catty corner from each other of the actual rail has a sharp edge. So we may want to talk to Nick about just taking a grinder to that. If he can't do it, I can stop by and smooth that out a little bit, just so we don't have any sharp edges sticking out.
That's good. Did you notice that, Bob? Because I know I, I haven't noticed that, but thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Anything else on Valley Park? Does anybody else have any comments or questions or updates?
I'm just glad it's open.
That looks great.
Me too. The natural, the natural trail is, has been cleared and we don't have it marked yet, but it has been cleared and it's beautiful. Again, Susan and I walked it and Nick did a fabulous job with that. I don't know if I mentioned that last month or not. My days are all running together here. So it's beautiful and it's, it's a really, really nice trail through the, through the wooded area in the back. So that has been completed too. Okay, moving on, new business, the bid opening 2020-2021 Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Contract. Did we get one, EJ?
We did.
Okay, all right.
Virtual bid opening. I'll just show everybody, it's still sealed. It has not been opened yet. This was received today from Cedar Springs Construction Company. This was the only bid that we received.
This was how we send out?
This was advertised following all of the, the legal bidding requirements. So this went out, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So Bill, what do I need to go over here? It's been a long time since I've done one of these and I've never done one virtually. So what do I need to address?
Well, just make sure the bond is there. And if it's one number, you can identify it. If it's a breakdown of different numbers in accessible categories, you can say that too. As long as it's clear, you know, what the total is and what the components are, that's all you have to do.
Yeah, usually, usually in the past, we've always gone to what the total number has been at the end. Who the, who the company is, where they are from. And then when we make our motion, it's contingent upon everything satisfying all of our requirements.
Yeah, pending, yeah, it's, yeah, I think it's typically been contingent on my review, Bill's review and Nick's review as well.
Yes.
So the contractor Cedar Springs Construction Co. Company, Inc. out of Pottstown, Pennsylvania. The total is $293,100. And the non collusion affidavit is included, the affidavit accepting provisions of the Workman's Compensation Act is included, the bond is included. And I think that's everything.
Okay, I will make the motion to consider the award of the contract to Cedar Springs.
Construction.
Construction Company in Potts, I'm sorry, Cedar Springs Construction Company, Inc. in Pottstown, Pennsylvania in the amount of, EJ, can you repeat that dollar number again?
Yes, $293,100.
Okay, so I made that motion. Do I hear a second?
I hear a second. As long as they meet all the bond issues and all the insurance issues and everything in conformance what has been stated out for the bid.
Okay. Satisfy EJ, Bill and our engineer. Or, I mean, Nick, sorry.
Let our engineer look at it too. It would be good for you guys to take a look at this your first time.
Thank you. All right. So I made the motion. Fred seconded it. Any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public, EJ?
There are not.
Okay. Mark, how do you vote?
Hi.
Susan, how do you vote? Bob, how do you vote?
Hi.
Brad, how do you vote?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, resolutions slash ordinances, consideration of advertisement of the proposed ordinance 2020-05 adding a section in quotes, conservation of woodlands and other vegetation to Article 28 Natural Resources Conservation Overlay District. Okay, I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, do we have any discussion or comments? EJ, do we have any public comment?
Not on this item, no.
Okay. Mark, how do you vote?
Hi.
Susan, how do you vote? Bob, how do you vote?
Hi.
Fred, how do you vote?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Okay. We have nothing under subdivision and land development. Do we have anything for additional business, EJ?
Uh, no.
Okay, I do have a few announcements here. You guys will just give me a second. Madeline, thank you very much for preparing these and getting these together for me. So the announcements I have here for October, COVID-19 pandemic is still proliferating throughout the country. The board urges everyone to help stop the spread, wear a mask in public, wash your hands frequently and thoroughly with soap at least 20 seconds, practice social distancing, avoid touching your face, and clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Keep in mind that all Departments of Health targeted COVID-19 mitigation orders such as limits to the size of events and gatherings. Food service industries and other business restrictions still remain in effect. Pennsylvania has released the COVID Alert PA app for your telephones. This allows users to receive a notification if they have had potential exposure to someone who has tested positive for COVID-19 without compromising your privacy or personal information. dash for more information. Thank you to all of those who participated in the Police Association's Community Blood Drive. It was an outstanding success with close to 100 donors and we look forward to doing even better next year. The Schuylkill Township Police Association's Annual Food Drive is underway. Donations of non-perishable items may be dropped off through October 31st at the municipal building Monday through Friday during normal business hours, or they're going to have a drive-by drop-off event at the township building parking lot on Saturday, October 17th between 9:00 a.m. and noon. Contact Officer Jim Hennessy for more information. It's leaf season and residents are reminded to not blow or rake their leaves into the street. The township does not have curbside leaf pickup. And if you dump your leaves into the roadways, you may be cited. Residents may drop leaves at the township compost yard at any time from October 19th through December 19th. Only leaves are accepted. No yard waste. Tree limbs or shrubs may be dumped. Violations of this policy may result in the yard being available by appointment only. The township office will be closed on Monday, October 12th for Columbus Day holiday. Halloween is October 31st. It is not an official or a township sponsored event and the township does not have an ordinance that establishes specific dates or times for trick-or-treating. Following recommended guidelines from the CDC, Schuylkill Township and the Board of Supervisors is not recommending trick-or-treating this year because of the COVID-19 concerns. Schuylkill Township and the Board of Supervisors ask that all families participate at a level that is comfortable for them while still adhering to the CDC holiday guidelines, which may be found on the CDC coronavirus website. Township residents are reminded to please respect other neighbors who do not wish to participate in trick-or-treating. The standard practice is to keep your front porch light on if you wish to participate and to turn it off if you do not. Pennsylvania's general election will be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Chester County has established satellite election offices and mail-in absentee ballot drop-off locations. For more information on this topic and other election information, visit www.chesco.org/elections. Does anyone else have any other announcements? No? How about some public comment, EJ?
Yes, we do have some public comment from John Maraz of Meadow Brook Lane and I, he did email earlier today and I forwarded that to the board and he's typed in a lengthy comment here, so I'll read this into the record. For the last few weeks, the police have been called and responded to many complaints at the playing fields at Pot House and Meadow Brook Lane. We all appreciate the response of Chief Fetterman and his, and his department have done. These complaints come at night due to noise when these fields are supposed to be closed per the school district. I sent this email to EJ earlier today. Again, the calls are due to loud music and noise, public urination and inappropriate language. I believe the school administration has a responsibility to inform those using the fields of the rules. At this time, there is no posting of rules and no signage except for no pets permitted on the fields. Tonight, my wife and another resident did speak out about this and the school said clearly, it's a township problem. The township needs to have a meeting with the administration. It's not acceptable that it should be left to the police alone. The school needs to take responsibility. Thank you, John Maraz. And I'll just follow up on that. I did talk to the chief about this today after receiving Mr. Maraz's email. Obviously, he's aware of the issue. They have been called numerous times, not just by Mr. Maraz, by several of the residents in the area. And the chief did agree that there are no signs there indicating that the fields are closed at dusk. Apparently, that's the policy, but it's not posted. Chief indicated that he's, he's been in touch with the school district already about the need to get those signs put up and they should have them up soon. And he did, he did agree that they have chased some kids off the field a couple of times already. So that's from, that's from chief.
EJ, what did you say was the township's responsibility in that?
The, Mr. Maraz was saying that tonight, his wife and another resident spoke, apparently the, the school district must be having a meeting tonight. They spoke about this and that the school responded that it's a township problem.
So do we need to have you contact them and say, no, it's, you need to put up the signs and then they need to call the police, but the township really isn't?
Yes.
The one focus, you know.
Yeah, I would agree. Problem, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is this on our township property or?
How many times a day or a week do we have the animal people drive around our area or in the township or around the school district or where Maraz is talking about?
Are you talking about the SPCA, Fred?
Yeah.
I only, I only think they, they come when they're called out. I don't think they drive around, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I was asking, is this on Schuylkill Township land or on Phoenixville Burrows?
It's school district property.
In Schuylkill Township on school district property.
That's part of, that's part of the property.
School or on the Phoenixville High School?
It's the middle school over here, isn't it?
Right, Bob.
The field at Pot House and Meadow Brook Lane, so that would be in Schuylkill Township. Yeah, the, where, the newer fields where the golf course used to be, I think, is where, it's basically right across the street from where Mr. Maraz lives. On Meadow Brook. So I mean, it is in the township, but it's not township property.
It's not township property, yeah. So EJ, will you, will you get in touch with Dr. Fagley and tell them they need to put signage up and that, no, this is not a township issue? That this is something that, that they need to put up these signs and deal with?
And.
Good point.
Do they have any security over there or who, who does that for them? Is that maintenance or?
I don't think they have any of their own security personnel.
Yeah, it's just common practice to call the police and have them enforce it, but.
I think while school is in session, they probably have, I don't know, they, they may have security people in the build, inside the building. But I don't think they have security.
Not 24/7.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think they do anyway, but I don't know. But anyway, I think, I think, I'm sorry, Bob.
I'd say maybe they need to put a job description where somebody's responsible for that. That's called before the police to patrol or take care of the property. And they've got liability concerns if something happens, right?
Yeah. Mr. Maraz just replied and said that they have no security and the, the school district's response is always to call the police.
Isn't it their job to, to keep their property safe?
No. Depends who you ask, Bob.
Yeah. I don't think they're legally obligated to have their own security force. I mean, whichever police jurisdiction their property falls within would be responsible to enforce. No, so, I mean, don't get me wrong, some school districts do have their own officers, but they're not required to.
Yeah.
So it would fall back to the local.
It's our enforcement issue, but we would hope for cooperation from the district on it.
Yeah.
I, I think, EJ, if you were to talk to Dr. Fagley, ask them to put up some signage and if they have any security cameras or anything like that, if they would be willing to release those cameras to our police officers to help with the investigation.
They have, they, they already do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I, you know, I don't.
Access to their security.
Maybe they're a big show.
Our police wanted to dole out some fines. Is there anything that states that they have to have signage out there first in order for fines to be given?
I think so. You know, the question is, it's clearly private property, but to be on the safe side with a citation, you'd need signage or warning for trespass, for defiant trespass. You have to tell them to get off first. But a sign is normally a substitute for that. I mean, the school could easily put out, tell their teachers to give notice to the students to save the heck off the field at night as well as putting signs up. And, you know, they can be disciplined in the school as well for bad behavior, but there are some things they can do. But ultimately, you know, it's an enforcement problem for the township.
But after hours, it sounds like the school's not going to do anything about it with one of their personnel going out to police it. So then the least we could do is ask them to put up signs and then we can take it from there. It gives us some teeth, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, EJ, is there any other public comment?
Nope.
Okay, pending, we have no discussion. Okay, pending. We have, uh, no discussion here uh, except to announce our budget meeting, which you did announce earlier was, is on October
Fifteenth.
Seventeen, sorry. October fifteenth. And, uh, and the twenty-ninth, both at seven thirty, is that correct?
Uh, six thirty.
Six thirty, okay.
Let me just, I can double check.
I think it's six thirty offhand.
Is it the fifteenth?
Yes, Fred. The seventeenth is a, a Saturday.
Oops, sorry about that. October fifteenth, October, I'm telling you guys the wrong day and the wrong time. I do apologize. So it's October fifteenth at six thirty PM. And if we need it, it's also October twenty-ninth at six, six thirty PM. Okay, with all of that said, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right. Thank you all so much. Everyone have a very good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks.
Happy Halloween.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy Halloween. Have a pumpkin day.
Thank you too, Fred. Bye.
Bye.